The college meeting to order. This is the city of Harvey, Illinois council meeting. Today is Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, December twenty-one. With all of the present, all the persons, council members mark yourselves as such. Here we have a call in person. Next item is the dedication of pledge allegiance. Uh, economic, would you be so kind?
We bow heads and pray. Good petition from all the priests. Mr. God and the Father, we come with their daughter, tell me if we don't have one. Come to your Lord Jesus, put our cups down for whom we know the Lord is equal. Be willing to give us an abundance of your grace and mercy and your blessings, Lord, because you've already done so. Lord Jesus, we give thanks, Lord Jesus, for waking us up every morning and allowing us to go again in our sin, but in a right friend of mine. We thank you for our family, Lord, we thank you for our physical blessing, we thank you for our financial blessing. Lord Jesus, we cannot thank you enough. It says in the word that if we see, see your face, you will heal our land. Matthew six thirty-three says, I am doing all things through Christ Jesus, their strength is being. Lord, we believe in our heart, we are your flock, you are our shepherd. Lord Jesus, we ask for leadership, we ask for your guidance, Lord Jesus, we ask for an abundance, Lord Jesus, of blessings throughout this entire city. We want you to bless this city of Harvey, Lord Jesus. We have adversity, but everybody has adversity. Lord, we know that we can do all things through Christ's strength. Lord Jesus, we asking, and this is our prayer, we asking all in Jesus' name.
Let's lift up Jesus' flag of the United States of America. Jesus is the hope for which there is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is presentation of the evening. Next from there is automatic reports. We will start with. We'll start with the sixth ward.
Thank you all. Uh, good evening, everybody. We glad you offered me now. It's uh, so nice to see so many, so much participation here in our city council meetings. Uh, my report this evening is gonna be very short and very brief. I would like to take condolences to one of the residents of the great sixth ward that recently demised the seats. Her name is uh, Talisha Jenarson. She just passed away. So heartfelt condolences go out to the Johnson family. My mother, the Jill Johnson, she's a great supporter. They're great people and a great family. So uh, we'll keep that family in prayer. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Next, uh, we have the second ward.
Good evening, everyone. Before I skip on the city's finances, I'm gonna extend my condolences to the Maxi family. Also, I wanna urge the public to remain vigilant. A mirror marshal, a sixteen-year-old student was last year leaving Thornton High School on Thursday, July tenth, twenty-two five. Her photo is shared on the Harvey Police Department's Facebook page. Please share it, stay alert, and help bring her home safely. I'll address a couple of things regarding the finances, beginning with the financial dis条smanship in Harvey. Since June of twenty-twenty-four, I've sent ten emails to the mayor, council, and comptroller with no response, even my own reimbursement, approved on June tenth, twenty-twenty-four, without my vote came with silence. Worse, this fifty thousand dollars was allocated to the second ward residents in the budget and is still being withheld. That's not a delay, that's a disservice. Audit failure costing taxpayers. On September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the Illinois comptroller issued a fourth audit notice after Harvey failed to submit required financial reports for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. By November first of twenty-twenty-four, the city's compliance plan was rejected for lacking even a CPA engagement letter. Now we're getting the hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars worth to get appointed auditor because of this administration's neglect. Unpaid deals and system shutdowns. By June fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Harvey faced shutdowns of its software and management systems due to the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents in unpaid invoices, outstanding bills from May twenty-sixth. And June twenty-third, remain unrecognized, no complete explanation. Unexplained building and inspectional costs. According to the May twenty-fifth, twenty-five deal list, the city paid sixty-three thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents to begin a construction code for inspectional services. Yet there is no breakdown, no detail on what was done, where, or for whom. That's why I'm calling for the Economic Development Committee chaired by the Oberalterwoman Helen Smith to meet, not just to hear rewards, to demand answers. Final words in stead of relief. In July of twenty-twenty-four, Harvey spent about thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars on fireworks. At one night show, Harvey's population is just under twenty thousand. That money could have been provided to two thousand households to offset the eighty-six point two percent property tax increase. A thousand dollars per person for her family. Instead, a residence like Ms. Dorothy, a fifty-year homeowner, fortified on her home for retention time, received nothing. The fireworks faded in one night, Dorothy ignored field guns today, and to record for the record, one fifty-three fourteen, that squatter's family was on again. I have more to say, but thank you sitting in Harvey for your support. It's too bad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the third ward.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to run a little bit short as well. Just want to thank the city staff for doing such a good job. I know um, you look, if you, it's hard with the resources that we have, the limited resources we have, but you still come to show up with your hat on, ready to put your boots on the ground. Uh, streets, you guys have been doing really well. Um, I know we got a little holdback, but I see that some of the lots have gotten cut and started back getting cut again, which we appreciate. That is what I think is my report.
Thank you. Next is uh, fourth ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everybody's staying cool. Appreciate everybody for coming out tonight. Um, my report be somewhat um, briefly, but um, when it comes to ward expenses, if residents are not aware, ordinarily, I'm supposed to believe be advocating to receive up to twenty-five thousand dollars a year for beautification in their ward. They don't necessarily guarantee to get all the money, but they should be able to get some. I've been on it for seven years. Um, seven years, you added up to add up to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for my ward, and out of that amount, I think I believe I received fifteen or twenty. You can forward the information. So with a hundred and fifty thousand for beautification, where does the money go? They said it goes to the general fund, but nobody know how it spent. If you're gonna have my money for my ward and not be giving it to me, I should be the one to be able to decide where I want it to be spent at. That's at least just being fair. I've been trying to meet with the mayor for about four months now. Um, for whatever reason, we just can't schedule a date, or if I can get a date or get a reply back, just to sit down and meet with the man. You know, break bread, manifest this, make things better, and sure, I'm trying to communicate. That's all I'm trying to do. Um, my public safety means I'm chairman of the Public Safety Committee. I'm pretty sure the residents are concerned about the city, the safety of the city, the improvements of the city, the suggestions for the city. But for whatever reason, May, I didn't get my schedule made. June, I didn't get my schedule made. July, I have one scheduled for the twenty-first. Hopefully, I can have that, but I haven't received anything back yet. Um, like I said, once it comes to the ward expenses, um, you only receive a certain amount at one time to increments, but twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot, not a lot of money to do when it comes to streets or tearing down houses, but beautifying the area, you know, we have a gateway sound, hundred forty-seventh, Dixie Highway that's been off for um, about ten years now. You know, just some beautification, put some flags up, get some garbage cans, um, the corners that say help clean up Harvey, you know, helping seniors going out, um, having back-to-school events, things like that, which I don't have a privilege in doing. So with that being said, I wish that we could all somehow work this thing on out. I'm still a team player, doesn't matter the situations, I am on this team, we are all on this team. And I was brought up that way, I was coached that way. You don't have to like a person, but you still have to play the game with that person. All I'm saying is just ask me the ball, 'cause I wanna shoot too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is the first ward.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm gonna be a little brief, uh, because I too would like to speak about the expense accounts. The expense account was changed to the actual expense account. It is no longer called the beautification account. The beautification account.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. The beautification account has been allocated back to the street department. If you remember when I first was elected, we had some amount of money to cut grass. Now that dam has been put back into the street department. So our expense accounts are twenty-five thousand dollars. There are certain guidelines to which you can use your expense account for. Uh, within those guidelines, it's all written out in the municipality code in chapter sixty-five. Once you fill that out, like I do, and my, my, um, I do have like a three to four month wait, but what happens is that I pay everything out of pocket first and submit the receipt. So with that being said, everything has a receipt and I've already paid for. I believe each alternate at the beginning of the term receive four thousand dollars, and once that money is used up, then you can get, um, you can get reimbursed through that. Uh, but that, that is my understanding of the expense account. Second of all, I would like to mention, as I read this on, um, the internet, and I thought it was really interesting. You take the group of ants, you have red ants and you have black ants, and you put them together in a jar, and they will combing them, they will get along, but somebody will come around and shake up that jar, and they start attacking one another. So the moral of what I'm trying to say is, before we react, let's get all our faps, let, let's be careful who's shaking up our jar, so we can have so much anger and hostility. I mean, I, I, I'm telling you that this really has to stop with the lies, and I'm not saying anyone at this council meeting here is lying, 'cause everyone has their own truth and, and, and believe in what, in what they're saying. But I, I, I'm seeing a lot more out there, and I'm just flattered yesterday. Somebody asked for my resignation. Let me tell you something, I took the note and I swore to God. So as long as I'm sitting in this seat, as long as I am not president, I have no circumstances. With that, I wanna say thank you very much, and you have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council, all agenda items, and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful at every one's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the audience, and no immediate action will be taken on any public comments issued. When your name is called, proceed to the podium. State your name. Um, please limit your comments to three minutes. No speaker may donate his or her time to another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comments on purpose of campaign or advertisement. This is not a question of national time, and council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about our operations should be addressed with the city staff during regular business hours. Um, and before we get started, I just want to say that we understand that everyone has, everyone has an opinion of the way they think things are supposed to be or things should go. Just because someone gets up and makes a comment uh, about political issue doesn't not mean that comment is fact. It just means that it is the opinion of the person who is giving it, so please govern yourself accordingly. Now, first, first on public comment is Lee Green, followed by Ryan Sinwoski.
Testing one, two. Good morning, Mr. Clark. Everyone else? Got a, a couple of concerns in reference to an ongoing situation that I've been hearing and I've discussed quite a few times. And it started about four weeks ago, when you met and you'd established your own own relationship with the community member as a confidant. Immediately, you opened up privileged information, these are not allegations, these are, this is from witness testimony, with information on said individual with confidential data. Over a period of four weeks, the individual, or individuals, because it wasn't just one person, it was a group of people harassed, threatened with violence, and even physically assaulted a business owner with violence. That business owner was hospitalized. Yes, that business owner was hospitalized. Mob action and guns were included in this action. The police stood down while the business owner was visiting, including Officer Regano, on several occasions. Tens of thousands of dollars of inventory was stolen from this said business owner. I wanna play a witness statement from the individual. One of the individuals involved in this mob action, and uh, we have several, including the business owner's people, the business owner's employees. So I've actually sat out and met with, including their attorney, and we are working on what happens next. So I just want the community to listen to this. And this is one piece, one video from a particular assault and mob action. This is witness testimony.
I heard. Let me hear you. So when we were doing the survey, Hassan showed up. He called the police. The police had no legal authority in anything because no crime was committed. When the police left, Hassan tried to win A-shark out there, flag our tires. When he was trying to flag the tires of our vehicle, then one of the gentleman that was waiting ran up to him and said, hey, man, what are you doing? Hassan tried to stab the person that was in the car. We're trying to stab, what you think gonna happen? You brought a knife to a birthday party? He defended himself.
I'm gonna stop right there, because there is another piece about the several videos and witnesses statements that we have, but this is one that's involving a twenty thousand dollar payout that allegedly you took, Mr. Clark, from this individual, and um, I want you to hear this.
Thank you very much.
I will share the information to the board township citizens action committee for this one here. I'll be the media officer.
Next is Ryan Sinwoski, followed by Chappelle Lowe.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan, I'm with the Harvey Historical Society and resident of Harvey. Uh, I did, I wanted to, I'm glad that somebody offered me to brought up the expense accounts. Uh, it's, it's very concerning, and it, it goes along with a pattern that we have seen that I've been speaking against for several years now, as far as no accountability for our tax dollars. Um, we, um, at the Harvey Historical Society, we recently threw FOIAs, because the city will not give us any information about our finances. We were able to obtain some of the expense receipts for Alderwoman Jerminske, and we did share some of those. Some of them, for about a year, probably included um, around a thousand dollars for turkeys, five hundred dollars for calendars, a thousand dollars for a DJ, and nine hundred dollars for a ward at Fulmanville. This is a few of them, you can go online and look at more. But my question is, um, not that it's bad to use uh, the, the word expense lines on things, but we can't get potholes fixed, we can't get streetlights on, we cannot get stray dogs and animals picked up that are, that are attacking people, but Shirley's hosting parties in the, in the first ward. So then, my question is, why does my Alderwoman not get reimbursed? Why is she not getting reimbursed for years, for her expenses? I mean, obviously, this seems like a way that Mayor Clark is trying to buy the Alderman's votes and to withhold funds if people don't vote how he wants to. So I don't know, I mean, I don't think that that's acceptable. Um, also, it begs the question, like, which is it, Mayor Clark and the four Alder yesmen? Is Harvey broke because you mismanaged it for six years, or do we have money, but for whatever you want to pay for? I think that's, I think it's really the second thing, 'cause I know this, whether it's your twenty-four hour security that you have, Mayor, for the house that you were told you don't even stay at, there's always those three police cars there, the camera. I mean, but then, like I said, parties in the first ward, that's great, if the city didn't look like it was falling apart, but then Shirley gets all her, her, um, you know, expenses paid for her ward, while ours are left. Um, also, I wanted to mention that, um, echoing the waste of the tens of thousands of dollars for the Fourth of July, um, while that's going on, the mayor is sending the police to bully harass and arrest and take people who are just asking, where's the money? Like, um, Melissa Crowley, uh, a neighbor of mine, you know, who was arrested and injected angles against her will. So I, I just wanna know why Mayor Clark has been using our police to protect certain actors, individuals going around the city that are, you know, trespassing on private property, they're doxing people, they're, they, um, one of them came to my home during the Fourth of July parade and actually attacked me at my home. So why are you doing this? And if you have something to say, Mayor Clark, just say it. Don't use our police to protect these, these bad actors. Thank you.
Next, we have Chappelle Lowe, followed by Chappelle Ramger.
Hello, y'all. I'm Chappelle Lowe. And twenty-twenty-three, I was elected to the Harvey Public Library Board. Thank you, who I wanted for me. Um, so, we have a lot of uh, things in Harvey that's going on at the same time. Um, just a couple of days ago, I'm pretty sure if you guys follow me on Facebook, I went live on one hundred fifty-third and Merdle, which that is supposed to be the area of the retention pond. Um, there was a lady in Ms. Dorothy's, um, old house, her and her significant other, they're living there. And by their admission, they've been there for two months already, and they're just, uh, they said that they have permission to be there. I'm trying to figure out if you guys wanted these people to be out so bad, why are you allowing squatters to come in and stay? I mean, you know, Harvey has had corruption in the past, plenty of corruption, and I'm trying to figure, is it because if they stay long enough, you know, they'll be able to get a ID and they'll be able to vote? I'm trying to figure if that's the reason they're there, because it's not just that one house, it's a couple of people that's squatting on one hundred fifty-third in Merkle. And then y'all tow up one hundred fifty-four for a year, and the street is starting to sink. What did you do? I mean, that was what, how many millions of dollars y'all wasted, and the street is starting to sink? Um, y'all got, uh, movies coming, people doing movies in Harvey, why would you wanna do that? That's embarrassing. Look how it look. And y'all wanna put that on a big screen for millions of people to see it? That's crazy. Y'all looking to embarrass us. Is, is that the goal, to embarrass Harvey, to make us look like we just ragged? Because basically, that's all they gonna see. I mean, and then, where's this money going? Where's the money going? I'm pretty sure y'all don't have police patrolling, that's gonna have to cost the taxpayers. Y'all have all this stuff going on, but ain't nobody patrolling over there on one hundred fifty-third and Merkle, keep them, them squatters out of there. But what, one hundred fifty-seventh page, always got a police officer sitting over there? And y'all supposed to be demolishing these homes. What if y'all demolished the home and somebody in there, a whole family in there? What y'all gonna do then? Like the people that boarded up over there on Hall Street? I mean, make it make sense. Y'all need to, you know, uh, figure out what y'all gonna do and let us know where this money going.
Thank you. Next, we have Chappelle Ramger, followed by Rui J.
Well, they pretty much took everything I wanted to say. Well, I was born and raised in this city, I wanna see my city great again, that's pretty much what I wanna say. Um, uh, we need to see a difference. That's, that's pretty much all I wanna say. I wanna see it better. We need to make it better. The money better, the streets better, the housing better, everything needs to be better. I, uh, today I seen the, the two young men, they came in talking about, uh, moving, uh, they thought they was doing a movie, uh, out here. And I'm asking, okay, you wanna do, y'all wanna movie out here, and it's just gonna benefit our city? And they, they didn't answer me. So my thing is, these people, this is the second or third time somebody done came out here doing movies, and, um, I'm not seeing a difference. We still have abandoned buildings, um, but no businesses coming in, no making a difference. So I'm trying to see what we gonna do about that. Uh, I wanna see a difference. All this arguing and bickering and all this other stuff, I wanna see a difference. I don't see no difference in the last six years, I need to see a difference. That's all I want, that's all I gotta say, 'cause they took everything I wanted to say. I just wanna see a difference.
All right, next is Rui J., followed by Stringer Harris.
Uh, what I'm about to say, I actually talked about it a little bit over two to three months ago. One of the significant things that we need in an administration, of course, we need to move forward. We need to stop bickering about what is not going on, but look at what things that are going on in a positive way. We cannot do it alone, we have to do it together. And no matter what we say, or whatever we try to put together, we're not going to get any help from the outside. It was quite significant when he killed in Dalton. Six years, okay? What happened? Nothing. But I did want to mention one thing particularly, and this is going to be directed by the concerned citizens of Harvey in reference to the finances. Yes. Add to the treasurer. The treasurer has never made a report in over six years. I did not want to say anything about the treasurer while that particular person was not present, but I will elaborate on much of the things that have gone on that are negative. There's a lot of positive things going on. Just open your eyes, go up down one hundred forty-second street, go up, down here at Symphony, go up on Dixie Highway. We have some things that are coming in here. Take advantage of it. I'm going to read this very quickly because of the time limit. Concerned citizens of Harvey are requesting that the treasurer position be immediately eliminated, including with a cessation of salary. A financial report has not been admitted to the Harvey City Clerk since August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. A public omission statement by the current treasurer, who is an elected official and is certified public accountant, has never been made. We are still waiting. The person has used real abuse over two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-plus monies and also the dollars of being reelected for the same position again and again. A second time, Harvey needs the money. Payments without production.
Thank you very much.
No pay, wholesale.
Next, uh, we have Stringer Harris, followed by Jerly Harris.
Uh, good evening, city council and, uh, Mayor.
I've heard a lot of negative things about the city of Harvey. I haven't seen one person come up here and say something positive. I just don't believe it. If you don't like it, get out. I'm just saying. I haven't seen one positive thing from residents. And I've been a taxpayer in Harvey for over 20 years. And I'm trying to figure out why is it so much attack on this administration when before that administration, it was just the same, if not worse? Didn't nobody really complain about coming in every whichaway in Harvey? And it looks like crap? It looked like crap when Calhoun was here. And all of a sudden, it's like, oh man, we don't like this, don't we? But, but I will say this. The Police Department, back in 2019 to 2020, had 36 homicides. This year alone, they have three, and two of them are closed. Let me say that again for the people in the back. It's only three homicides, or actually three shootings, I guess, or homicides, if you want to put it. And two of those are closed. Like, I wanted to take my hat off to the Chief of Police here and the Police Department that's doing such a great job with that. Crime is actually down in the city of Harvey. And if you don't say nothing about nothing, that's something to say something about. You can shake your neck, you can shake your head, facts are facts. All you have to do is look up the facts. We can find problems with anybody and anything. I'm gonna do one more. I found out maybe last week that it was a resident who house caught on fire next door to somebody else. And as much as we talk about giving back to residents and doing that, I also want to commend and take my hat off to the mayor for helping this lady out when people voted against it. When this lady in her own ward, her older woman didn't even help her. So let that be known. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Jerlyn Harris, followed by Judge Iver.
Is this the quick one? My name is Jerlyn Harris. I have lived at 15313 South F over 50 years. I was elected official of the Harvey Public Library District for six years. I served those six years to the best of my knowledge as a servant of this community. Now I'm phased, I want to first say thank you to the Honorable Mayor Calhoun. Excuse me, the Honorable Christopher J. Clark. I don't know why, you know? Because the last time, not just the last time, the last administration wouldn't allow me to talk. So sometimes when I'm in this place, I wanted to talk, but I was very made of 2019 when he had to leave. Because he did nothing for our city but walk. But I want to thank this council for all that you continue to do. This, I know this was on the job learning for each and every one of you all. And you all did a great job. Thank you for that wonderful parade that you used the funds for to make this city a happy day, a happy day for the Fourth of July. Even though we had agitators out there, but they was dismissed. I tweeted the blood of Jesus over that destruction and others that believe in the blood of Jesus. My ultimate, I wish you would get with the streets and sanitation and clean up the alley from the debris and torn up road adjacent to Vine and Ashton and 153rd Street Block. We got tall trees, everything over seven feet tall in back of our home. Please, let's get that done. Everybody's talking about, you know what? Every city, every administration has to report to Susan Mandola, who is the secretary, who is in charge of the monies here in the state of Illinois reporting. You need to read, people, you got to read. Go to the General Freedom of Information and Open Meeting Act and find out the rules and regulations. Read! Because no one is saying nothing about the library. Nobody. And you paying hefty taxes. But we need that resource, even though it's in shambles. We need it. We need people here to come in and sit down and get cool and get warm in the wintertime. I want to thank you very much, neighbors, for listening to me, because I am interested in this city.
Thank you very much. Next we have Judge Iver.
My name is Judge Iver. I want to be clear, I would like to introduce myself and control my own narrative. I went to Thornton Township High School in 2005, and I've come back to a Harvey I do not recognize. My intention is to not bring unrest, but to help resolve some of the issues that plague the most beautiful and thriving south southern suburb. And I don't intend to bring in non-profits here. We're looking to bring forth properties here because the tax base needs to recover. I'm very clear here that it wasn't outsiders who did it, it happened, it was his own people, it was insiders. I listened to the commentary, what I'll tell you is, because complainers never solve anything. That's why when I leave here, I'm going to go to that block where there are squatters and I want to call the police, because I pay attention. I do research. Within 30 days, you are not entrenched. You should be removed and the police should move you. If the police show up, it is not because they're showing favoritism, it's because they're doing their job. That when citizens stop passing the buck and blaming other people and stand up, they see the result. Yes, Mr. Hassan can put out a narrative, but Harvey, everybody claiming broke. Do you know that he's cost you over $3 million in legal fees because he continues to sue your city? Do you know that he has a sanctuary where there are illegal immigrants and deplorable living conditions? Do you know that Hassan has made countless promises to do right by the city? From dead dogs to dead humans to bad business practices? He has taken your land and not complied with your government. So only a fool would get up here and say, let's save Hassan, when Harvey is in there. Just so that I can help you out, if a movie come here, that's awareness. When people find out about you, they care about you, they visit you, because it ain't just citizens that take, they help the taxes, it's also the visitors that help the taxes. When they want to come in, spend money and see what you got, maybe if they know how bad it is, they'll help you out. Because it is the call from one American to another, no matter where you geographically live. We are the United States of America. And when we show up for one another, things happen, change happens. And I'm just gonna talk about my treatment. I've been called every name in the book except for who I am. After y'all saw what happened in Dalton, y'all didn't want me to come here to find the truth. You wanted me to come here to be an assassin. You wanted me to come here and be obedient, and I ain't that guy. So let's be clear here. I want to address one person with 15 seconds. You invited me COVID-19, and you doubled down on it. But you have been siding with why your lieutenants have attacked me, put out false narratives, have harassed me, and the difference between the two is I got receipts. Are you ready to give that?
Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for your comments. We greatly appreciate all of it. Next we have our department. That's a report. Let's start with our department report, which will be led by our city administrator, Claudia Davis, who will follow the agenda as such.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, as well as residents. We passed approximately the halfway mark this year, and I'm proud to say Harvey is moving forward. We are making meaningful, measurable progress in building a better Harvey. Our work over the past year has been centered on a clear mission. We are prioritizing revitalization in our city and restoring pride in the neighborhoods that show it. Let's start with one of the most urgent priorities, safety and infrastructure. Streetlights in Harvey are no longer a promise, they are reality. If you don't remember, Hall Street was not lit on 159th, 147th, Broadway. All have received much needed lighting and safety for visibility. We're not done, though. 147th Street is next. We're actively working through the grant details to get critical projects completed as soon as possible. We've partnered with Kamehameha. So we're repairing residential streetlights across the city. Once all existing lights are on, we will assess the additional lighting needs where poles have never existed. We've also taken firm action and long-lighting, prolonged lighting in dangerous properties. Through the combination of grants and strategic programs, we've demolished more than a dozen deteriorated buildings, including key structure sites. I want to only mention a few on Broadway Center, Lake Brook and Hall Street, but they've been, there have been much more. So because, you know, a lot of people like receipts, I'll pull out a couple. 133 West 151st Place, 208 West 154th Place, 176 West 154th Place, 16404 Emerald, 15803 Lake Brook, 15746 Park, 15127 Wood, 14933 Bell, 14830 Wood, 14825 Honory, 14809 Kalina. And the list goes on and on, an amount of properties that have actually been demolished over the time that we've been in Harvey. The demolition also is not over. A lot of abandoned properties that are in the city, the city does not own, but we still look to work with the Cook County Renew Program to bring back the demolition homes. One of our meaningful demolitions was the home next to Ms. Armor West, who was displaced after a devastating fire. Thank you to Mayor Clark for helping her get back into her own. We've seen real momentum in economic development as well. Eight new businesses have opened their doors, so we would like to say welcome to Sherri Industrial, Cymatine Cafe, Local One, Micrstep Daycare, Prime Auto Glass, sorry, the Imports, the Garage and the Luck Station. We also look forward to opening new air cannabis dispensary. The groundbreaking recently and expected to open by September. This project represents not only major economic investment, but also a new era of opportunity for the city. This year marked the grand opening, we had the grand opening of Harvey Lofts, expanded housing opportunities and revitalized the downtown neighborhood. In addition, we have approximately 15 new investors actively exploring opportunities in Harvey to prove that the confidence is growing into our city. Our partnerships are strengthening as well. We have Carson Power Watch that opened, Poet Investment, YMCA, and many more investments throughout the city. On a public safety front, we've made significant progress. We've welcomed multiple officers. We've welcomed people into our police and fire department with the expanding team and well-deserved promotions through both departments. Most notably, we accepted a brand new $2 million engine. This is our first engine that we've received, I want to say in over 20 years. We've also made major strides in infrastructure this year. We've paved 147th, which has never been paved in the last 10 years, 20 years. Dixie Highway, Hall Street, 159th East End or near Benzines. We've paved Fairfield, Wichita and Lake Brook. We're not only focused on large projects, but we're also meeting individual needs, like the installment of a new water line in Ms. Betty Allison's. Perhaps the most historic achievement this year is we passed a comprehensive plan. The city of Harvey, for the first time in over a decade, we have a bold and unified vision in guiding our growth, development and future. Thank you.
Next we have the Police Department.
Mayor, council members and residents. I'm here today to provide an update on recent crime statistics and cases handled by Harvey Police Department during the month of June 2025. This report also encompasses the department's overall activities for the past month. In June 2025, the Harvey Police Department responded, the Harvey Police Department Patrol Division responded to a total of 2,324 calls for service and patrolled a total of 12,990 miles. Their efforts resulted in 55 misdemeanor arrests, 10 felony arrests, 131 moving and equipment violation citations, 62 vehicles towed and 51 reported accidents. I would also like to note that on the Fourth of July, our office recovered narcotics and rifle during that Fourth of July weekend. It was something that was, that happened with a traffic arrest. And just want to give kudos to the Police Department. There's a photo of the rifle as well as the handgun and narcotics that were recovered that day. I'm also pleased to report through the efforts of the Harvey Police Department's Investigation Division, felony charges were filed and significant criminal investigation, some of which may have already heard of. The shooting of 11-year-old Willow James in 158th Block of Kalina Avenue. On May 28th, 2025, 11-year-old Willow James was struck in the head by a straight bullet while riding home from school, while riding home from school in a vehicle with her father and her cousin. Willow was hospitalized and transferred to a rehab facility in the city of Chicago. I'm pleased to announce that she is doing better and on a road to recovery. Please keep on your thoughts and your purps. Following an in-depth investigation, the Harvey Investigation Division identified Grayland T. Waters, a 29-year-old male born July 30th, 1995, from the city of Harvey as the offender. Mr. Waters was taken into custody and the firearm believed to have been used in the shooting was recovered when he searched his vehicle on July 1st. Mr. Waters was indicted on the following offenses: attempted murder, aggravated unlawful use of a firearm, and aggravated battery with a firearm to the class X government in the state of Illinois. Lastly, I would like to highlight a special operation that was conducted by the Harvey Police Department in conjunction with TASS, which is a group that we utilize here within the city that we've partnered with, which is Treatment Alternatives in Safe Communities. They're known as TASS. They're an organization that our agency partnered with over the last few years that provides case management and advocacy services for individuals facing mental health and substance abuse challenges. Their mission includes offering alternatives to incarceration and supporting the entrance to the community for various populations, including commercial sex workers and those with complex needs. On July 2nd, 2025, the Police Department conducted an operation called Operation Springtime Safe Travel. During this operation, Springtime Safe Travel is an ongoing initiative focused on addressing concerns related to human trafficking and commercialized sex trafficking, which is prostitution throughout the city. This operation aims to create a safer environment for everyone by allowing the Police Department to collect critical information and allocate appropriate resources to areas in need. This initiative encompasses various efforts, including issuing traffic citations, making criminal arrests, identifying drug activities, and raising community awareness. However, this operation, however, the success of this operation depends greatly on the support and involvement of our community members. We urge you to, if you see something, say something. Operation Springtime Safe Travel is more than just a law enforcement effort. It is a collaborative partnership between the community, law enforcement, and local service organizations. Your participation is essential and will make a significant difference in enhancing the safety and well-being of our community. During this operation, as you can see probably on the screen, this is a part of the operation that was conducted, we accomplished the following: nine arrests for solicitation of prostitution. nine arrests for solicitation of prostitution, three vehicles were towed and three commercial sex workers were referred to treatment and services through TASS, which is Treatment Alternatives for a safer community. Throughout the month of June, 15 harmless bags were disseminated citywide. Three individuals in the area of 146th and Houston's business corridor were referred to treatment and services. One individual on 159th and Houston is now re-engaged back into the treatment program. Three individuals took harmless bags but denied having problems. And TASS has also said to me that our Police Department, we have a member here, if you don't mind standing up, Front TASS. I do want to mention that in the harmless bags that are disseminated throughout our city, we have Narcan, water, a small snack, a $10 gift card, soap and face towels. Some are even placed inside of City Hall with our auxiliary officer that's here if someone notes on any. The Harvey Police Department remains steadfast in its dedication to enhancing the safety and quality of life for our residents. We value your continued support as we move the city forward. Should you have any questions or require further information, please do not hesitate to contact the Harvey Police Department or take a look at our Police Department's Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Fire Department. Follow up those words.
Greetings, everyone. It's my pleasure to present the Harvey Fire Department activities for the month of June 2025 on behalf of our Fire Chief Howard Fisher, who has been here tonight. We had a response of a total of 153 calls, 16 fire-related calls, which include brush fires, building fires, store fires and vehicle fires as well. 42 EMS calls, which included motor vehicle incidents. 22 good intent calls, those would include canceled dispatch, no incident found or smoke odor CO calls, which also included 18 hazardous conditions, gas leaks, electrical wiring and power lines down. 45 false alarms, included alarm system activations. Nine service calls, public assistance, lockout, elevator reach, etc. And then finally, I would like to announce that our Fire Department has initiated the Smart 911. This is a system whereby residents will be notified and can be notified in case of emergency via an app. Our captains and other members of the department are working on their QR code. And if you stepped outside the door, when you step outside the door, you're going to see flyers. We have them posted also in libraries. We have reached out to some citizens and our goal is to reach as many people as possible so that everyone can get signed up for this app. So if you have any questions concerning, you can reach us at the Fire Department at any time.
Thank you. And next is Public Works, followed by Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a few moments to provide a brief update on several key initiatives and ongoing efforts within public works over the past weeks. First, I want to recognize the hard work and preparation that went into this year's 4th of July celebration. Our team worked diligently to ensure the city looked its best, cutting grass, trimming trees and beautifying the parade route and its surrounding areas. Their dedication helped create a festive and welcoming environment for everyone to enjoy. Moving on to Ward 5, I'm pleased to report that condo repairs are now underway. So far, we've used 18 tons of cold patch material to improve road safety and driving conditions. We thank the residents for their patience and cooperation as this important work continues. In our grounds and maintenance division, the team has been focused on keeping our neighborhoods, our neighborhoods clean and well-maintained. Over the past few weeks alone, they've mowed and trimmed over 197 vacant properties and lots, a significant effort that directly enhances the appearance and safety of our community spaces. We're also investing in our team's development. Six employees have officially begun training for their commercial pesticide licenses. These three-year licenses will enhance our ability to maintain public safety spaces and public safety effectively. Turning to our facilities maintenance division, our team has boarded up six properties throughout the city. This all in order to help secure and stabilize vacant sites. These proactive sales are critical in our ongoing efforts to curb lights and improve public safety across neighborhoods. Lastly, a quick update from our water division. Over the past few weeks, the team has completed 107 meter readings, 28 meter checks and exchanges, 15 hydro backhoe checks. They issued five red car notices and 88 yellow car door hangers. Both the water and streets maintenance teams continue to provide high-quality service responding to work orders quickly and effectively in order to ensure the city's essential services are reliable and responsive. In closing, I want to thank all of our teams for their continued dedication and professionalism to our residents and for their ongoing support as we work together to build a stronger, cleaner and safer community. That ends my report.
Thank you. And next, we have Economic Development Team. I don't have to keep announcing you, you know where you're supposed to come in, so please do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers and citizens. I'm glad to be here with you. My name is Caesar Suarez. I'm the Economic Development Director and I work with Business Development and making sure that we have jobs and investment come to the city. Planning and zoning, as we look at around the city and how we can beautify it and plan for a better Harvey. And also property sales, which is a big undertaking, given that we have a lot of property, but a lot of opportunity out there for people to really redevelop and revitalize. So on the business development front, we actually had two visitors come here. We went to the ICSC conference and we met a lot of developers there and invited them to come to Harvey. And we actually took two, we had two tours come and we shared with them, one in particular wanted to do some apartment building development and we shared with them four clusters of properties in downtown. Another developer was looking at single-family housing and they wanted to put about 30 units and we shared with them, what would it be if you really just take on this one block and build single-family homes on them? So those two are being considered. And again, the development process takes a long time. You have to share with them what are the opportunities, how long it takes, what are methods for sale and so on. So which is a thing that we do on an ongoing basis. Another thing on the business development side, we received eight applications for Class 8 property tax applications and they're basically incentives to encourage businesses to really come to our community or expand. And so we have eight of them here coming. And one is scheduled to go to the council agenda for this coming month, which will be dealing with an abandoned industrial building and repopulate, redeveloping that particular property. So we're excited about that. On the planning and zoning front, one of the things we do is we do zoning clarifications. You just can't go anywhere in Harvey and set up shop. You have to get approved for that. So we had 70, 64 zoning applications, 57 have been processed as of June 2025, 44 approved, we have five special use permits. And then what I wanted to say with the special use permit process, it's a way that we work with businesses saying that we'd love to have you here in Harvey, but in order to really get the approval, we negotiate things like facade improvements, fencing, landscaping and making sure that they really do a fantastic job of improving their business property. One example that you may have seen that was really a night and day difference was Prime Auto Glass on Alstead. I'm really excited about that. If you see the before and after pictures and next time I'll get some photos up there, you can see what a great difference that made, certainly makes everybody proud and we're proud to have them here in our city. So we'll just keep working with that. Well, we have five special use permits that paid their application. We're going to address them. August 27th is when we have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and we expect to have them all presented there. As far as property sales, the city has about 10 industrial properties, eight commercial properties, about 120 residential properties. And yes, that's a lot, but that also creates opportunities. And that's why we work with developers and there's been steady interest in that. In fact, what we've done as a city is we declared our city properties a surplus. We have produced lists and put them online for maps and lists. You can go and find out which property interests you want, whether it's city-owned or whether it's privately owned. We've also developed an approval process and also we're tracking them and making sure that when we review them, we can bring them before council. As a result of that, what we seek for right now, we're in the process of closing on four properties. J and T Group at 150, 150 at Western is a six-unit apartment building. They'll be investing $108,000. Neighborhood Services, they're at 14928 Page, there's an eight unit and they're looking to invest $156,000. TK Construction, 15920 Center, commercial property, they're investing $140,000. And then Bluecrest Estates, Bluecrest Estates at 60 East 150th Street and they're investing $140,000. These are on the verge of selling. And as we sell them, we expect them to develop and make that investment. And again, you can see the revitalization of Harvey. So our city and our neighborhoods and our property will take, we need to take a comprehensive and multi-pronged approach, as I've been explaining. And we're all in this together. We have this great opportunity to work with residents, community partners and small and large-scale developers to rehab, renovate and repurpose all these properties. So together we will improve the existing housing stock, add to the housing stock and increase our population and of course, improve home ownership along the way. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, members of City Council and Harvey residents. My name is Lada Harris. I'm a building director for City of Harvey. It is both an honor and a responsibility to present this monthly report on behalf of the Building and Inspection Services Department. Our department continues to work diligently to ensure that we provide timely and effective services to our residents in our community. For the month of June, we are pleased to report the following performance highlights. Seventy permits were approved, ranging from residential upgrades to commercial improvements, helping maintain safety and compliance across our city. Twenty new contractors licenses were issued, welcoming skilled professionals to our local construction market. Sixty business licenses were approved, a strong sign of continued business interest in the investment in Harvey. We are excited to report a noticeable influx of our new contractors expressing interest in Harvey, working in Harvey. This increase of contractors engagement reflects the growing trust in our department and in the city's direction. Our customer satisfaction survey is also going exceptionally well. We are receiving a significant amount of positive feedback, particularly regarding responsiveness and the professionalism and overall production of our department. This tells us that our efforts to be more accessible, efficient and residential, resident-focused are making a real impact as we move deeper into the construction season. The Building and Inspection Services Department remains committed to holding the highest standards in service, safety and community engagement. Together we are shaping a stronger Harvey, one permit, one property, one partnership at a time. This concludes my report.
Good evening. I'm Alexia Hall, I'm the Director of Communications for the City. I want to share a few exciting developments with you this evening. First, we introduced a new initiative called This Week in Harvey. It's a short, high-impact video update. It's 90 seconds or less that highlights the latest projects, events and progress happening right here in our city. The goal is to keep our residents in loop with quick, consistent updates. These videos are posted across our digital platform and will soon be landing directly in your inboxes. Secondly, we are in the early stage of planning our third Community Solutions Meeting. These meetings give residents a chance to share concerns, connect with city leaders and hear about initiatives that directly impact your neighborhoods and your city. We'll keep you informed of the date as plans solidify. Finally, I'd like to encourage all of you to follow us on Facebook and subscribe to our City of Harvey's YouTube channel. This is where we post timely updates, videos, photos and information on city services and upcoming events. We are working hard to build trust, transparency and to create a sense of connection across Harvey. And your continued support makes that possible. So for those of you who have not seen This Week in Harvey, let's take a look right now. This is Week in Harvey, your quick look at the people, progress and pride shaping our city. From safety efforts to star power, we've got a lot to cover. Ready? Let's go. The Harvey Police Department launched a targeted saturation effort of 154th Street to combat solicitations. Officers made arrests of both customers and individuals involved, while also offering support resources to those seeking help. The operation shows what happens when community voices are heard and public safety is a top priority. Harvey celebrated Independence Day in style with a community parade, carnival games for the kids and a fireworks finale that lit up the summer night. We want to give a huge thank you to our sponsors. This incredible day of celebration wouldn't have been possible without their support. And finally, there's a little bit of Hollywood in Harvey. Our city will soon be used as a filming location for season two of Apple TV series. While we can't share the name just yet, keep your eyes open. Harvey will show up on your screens and... Well, as a wrap, along with this week in Harvey, say safe, say you're home and say it loud. The party is happening right here in Austin. See you next time. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. To the mayor, to the city council and the residents and my coworkers. My name is Joseph Winnison Jr. I'm the Director of Senior Services. Our department has some minor goals. They're of health and then forming and wellness. The greatest asset that we have in our communities are our seniors and the little children. But today I'm going to make my report very short. Though the last two weeks since the last time we met, we had our June 10th meeting here at City Hall. We had 64 guests and we had a lot of reflections about the past and the future. July 4th, we have our senior line dancing group. We walked down the 154th Street dancing seniors, had a great time. We did line dancing that everybody knew the music and they all participated. We had 25 guests. We have grown from that to about 45 seniors. We meet here regularly on Tuesdays and Thursdays. You're welcome to come. In closing, we had bingo, which is growing here. And that's once a month on Thursday. We had 46 participants and they love to come out. And then they are growing into other activities like playing cards, dominoes. We are trying to hang out with one another at different, at different homes in Harvey. What we're trying to do is get the seniors actively involved in the city. Where we have block club parties like we used to have, some of the things that the seniors possess, the knowledge about what the community can look like and what it will be like if we work together. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by thanking everyone for being here tonight. I'm Charles Moore, the City Collector of City of Harvey. It's an honor to speak directly with our residents, community partners and my staff. As the City Collector, my responsibilities and my commitment is to ensure that every city dollar we accrue is management-integrated, transparent and purpose. The work we do in the Department of Revenue is not just about collecting funds. It's about ensuring that the funds collected can support the services and fractures our community depends on. Over these past months, we've taken important steps forward. We've We've modernized our system to improve efficiency and make it easier for residents to access information, make payments, and understand their responsibilities to the city. We've strengthened internal controls and increased financial reporting and to promote accountability and reduce risk. And importantly, we focus on listening to your concerns about fines, fees, economic trends, and finding ways to offer flexible payment plans and more equitable options. But we're not stopping there. Our vision for the year is ahead, and it is clear. The future is we invest in our neighborhoods, improve our city services, and grow Harvey's economy in a way that benefits everyone. I close by thanking you for your time, your feedback, and your trust. The road ahead will be have challenges, but transparency, we will keep Harvey on a path towards robust stability. That concludes my report, and I want to thank you for making Harvey great again.
Thank you. Thank you to the department heads and the reports that you're giving. We are, I think I can speak on behalf of the council, we are very impressed with the work that you have been doing, month after month after month. As we know, there are those who say there's nothing happening in Harvey, but you definitely demonstrate that there is a lot of work being done in this city that's moving this city It's unfortunate because many people's eyesight is so myopic that they can't see beyond their noses to see the great work that you're doing. Everything that I've heard thus far, from office, city administration, all the way down to the revenue department, it's absolutely stunning. And you guys continue to get better each and every month, and your numbers show it. So, thank you so much for everything that you do. We have, next to the mayor, all comments, I'll try to make that brief so we can, in our meeting. Fourth of July, first of all, I have to lecture, once again, thank the staff, thank the department heads, thank all the employees that participated in the Fourth of July parade, they did fire show, fireworks display. You know, there's some out there that just don't want to believe me, but we do have the best fireworks in Southland. I keep saying that, and I dare anybody to challenge it and show us difference. But as far as the Fourth of July is concerned, we fund that through donations, and we've been funding the Fourth of July donations for quite some time, primarily because I wouldn't let the staff spend money on Fourth of July parade, so they had to find some other way to do it. And so, what you're seeing, or what you see, you know, a lot of times people don't understand how it happens, so they think that there's something nefarious going on. But honestly, we have a lot of sponsors, a lot of donors that contribute, and the ones in, the staff does a lot of work to make sure that's done. Now, when you look at the, when you look at St. Francis the Building, there's money that's being paid out, but that money has been paid out because donations came in. So, and that's actually how you have been able to have your Fourth of July parade and celebration for all of the years except for, I think it was 2020, because we didn't do it in 2020. So, but, you know, we also have the Mayor's Cup, and the Mayor's Cup is a three-on-three soccer event that's been held within our, what year? Fourth? Oh, sorry. Fourth year, just want to make sure I have it right. It is now an event, and we have a, I'm just very plain English, a lot of participants, over a thousand, a thousand people come out to this particular event to either participate in a direct soccer or to support the teams that are playing. It is the only event that I know of in the summer that when the youth participate in, it actually offers money. Many times they offer little trophies and things, participation trophies and things like that. Well, we have grown throughout the years, and this year, the first-place divisions, we had seven divisions, and each division, there was the first and the second place. The first place got a $1,000 prize, and the second place got $500 prizes, and they got also medals. Once again, that's due to our sponsors. We've been sponsored by Wind Creek, we're sponsored by Canes, you said, I can't see you over there. Canes also sponsors us, which I thought was really unique because we don't even have the Canes in the City of Harvey. But, you know, they sponsor, and many others do as well. That particular event, there's something that, like I said, we do every year and win that fourth year. We specifically, you know, would love to see the diversity in the event. It seems like more of my, my Mexican and my Middle Eastern brothers and sisters participate. So we wouldn't, you know, like open up the door to everybody else, but if you don't participate, you can't win. So, soccer is probably the, well, I said football, is that what I should say? Football is, is the biggest sport in the, in the, in the world. And so, it's one of the easiest sports for people to be able to participate in, and we're glad to be sponsored here. As was reported by staff, potholes, streetlights, those things are already being handled, they're continually handled day in, day out.
I miss speed bumps.
You miss speed bumps? She, okay, she also miss speed bumps because we're still installing those. We haven't had a comprehensive plan since 1968.
Sixty-eight.
1968. The City of Harvey finally has a comprehensive plan again, but we have not had one since Grants. One of the things that people I don't think understand about grants is grants come with a certain degree of trust. I think someone mentioned, I don't know who was doing the comments, or who was doing the departmental reports, that we have to dot i's and cross t's in order to get grants. We have to be able to demonstrate that we can comply with whatever, whatever the requirements may be as far as the grant is concerned, in order for us to be able to receive it. So, when we get grants, for instance, to do 154th Street, that a lot of people seem to appreciate, and that we were able to have a Fourth of July parade on this year, that comes through a grant. We weren't receiving grants in this city for many years. You know what I'm saying? All women seriously shaking her head here. We weren't being able, for over a decade, we were not able to receive grants in the City of Harvey because we weren't dotting i's and cross t's. Now, can I say, is there room for improvement? Absolutely. However, the City of Harvey has definitely improved significantly as far as that's concerned, and it demonstrates that while some of us locally may not believe in what the administration is doing, there are people in the county, there are people in the state, and there are people in the federal government who believe what this administration is doing and the improvements that we have made. It's nice that we have been able to meet some people in ICSC. Glad that the, those representatives that went out on behalf of the city were able to make some connections and create some relationships from going to ICSC. It is going to help us to improve from an economic development standpoint, and as you heard from Cesar Suarez, we're doing quite a few things as far as that's concerned. I actually met with a developer this week that was first established and met in ICSC, and I was able to have a follow-up meeting with that particular developer. I also have another developer who I actually have a relationship with, and did not even know that he was a developer in the City of Harvey. And I won't say exactly what it is until the actual construction begins, and then everyone can see what that is. But the established relationships are still important, and it is moving us forward in the city. Finally, a few notes. One is, yes, before our last meeting, I wished everyone a happy Juneteenth. I hope everyone had a happy Juneteenth and a happy Juneteenth celebration. And of course, once again, Joe Winnison, because I keep wanting to call him Harvey Winnison, that comes right to my head, you know, the work that you've done with the seniors to make sure that we have the activities. We want to have more and more activities for our senior population, and that's not to diminish on anybody else's population, okay? But we do have a senior department for senior services. Seniors seem to have some of the most, I would say, probably, unique issues that they have to deal with, and at times, those issues are not understood except for those, except for by those who can either have the empathy or the sympathy as far as handling them. And we want to make sure, I've said it before, those are people that, where my loyalty at? My loyalty is to the people who took care of me in this city when I was a little kid. Many of those people still live here, and those people helped to shape, shape me into the person who I am. I could have taken a lot of other directions, I could have done a lot of other things, but I didn't do those things because some people were willing to cuss me and pull me to the side and explain some things to me. Okay? I had a mom who worked several jobs, so I was really raised by a village because of that. She did all the work to put the food on the table, but there was a village that was helping along. And I'm grateful to those people, and I will continually be loyal to those people until my dying day. So that's just that. Now, it's, you know, two things, let me end up on you here. First of all, Chicago PD films here in the City of Harvey. Nobody says anything about that. We're glad that Chicago PD films here. First of all, number one is Harvey's marion LaRoyce Hawkins plays Lieutenant Atwater in Chicago PD, and we're so happy, and he is so proud to be able to have some influence in where he works to actually bring them back to the community in which he's grown. Okay? And so, we love the fact that he does that, and he shows whatever love that he possibly can to the city in the best way that he possibly can. We're not expecting him to save the city, but we do appreciate the fact that he recognizes this city, and when he does, I don't know what chief, our chief is over there. Yeah, they do, they do hire some of our police officers to do security. They do hire, they do bring money to the city, okay? And, and that is also helpful as well. It's not, I know some people think, well, I've got a thousand dollars, oh lord, I'm rich. You know what I'm saying? Which might not add. That's scarcity thinking, but we're not going to even give that, that speech to them. Scarcity versus abundance thinking. But that's not a lot of money, but it shows us that people believe. They can work with this city to come here and film here while they can go to other municipalities such as Chicago, and they've expressed that, and have more difficulties trying to deal with those cities to get permits just to be able to film. So we, we invite more to come, and it just so happens that more and more filmmakers are starting to see that the Harvey administration is easier to deal with, and so they choose to do business in our city. And so, I'm proud of that. Now, last but not least, I am going to try to call the truth. Okay? I know some of y'all didn't expect this, but I'm gonna try to call the truth. One of the things that happened when I was talking to one of the developers, well, they talked about what was going on in the city. Developers are, investors are very conservative. They just don't like a lot of foolishness and nonsense. And it's not to say that some are against the city or some are in favor. It's not even my issue. My issue is what the developers and the investors see. And when the investors and the developers see one city over here that's for all intents and purposes, and it, you know, for all intents and purposes, you know, it's a quiet city, and then they got a city over here that's noisy as, as beyond belief, they choose the quieter city. Now, mind you, neither one of those cities are perfect. Neither one of those cities are absent of problems. It's just how they go about handling those problems is what makes the difference. If you don't think that they got problems in Orland Park, you haven't really investigated Orland Park. If you don't think that they got problems in Homewood Lynn, and the Marquina, and Homewood, Homewood has bank robberies, sorry, Homewood, because I ain't trying to throw y'all on the bus, but Homewood has bank robberies in the middle of the day, in the middle of the day. But how they handle it is different. Okay? So what I want to do, and I'm going to continue to do, first, you've got every right to say whatever you want to say, you can think whatever way you want to think, I'm not responding to it unless it is positively moving this city forward. So that's going to be my philosophy going forward. So, once again, freedom of speech is just that, and you're more than, you're more than welcome to accuse me of whatever you want to accuse me of. But if while you're doing it, it's not moving this city forward, I'm not addressing it. Two, as the mayor, my door has always been open and continues to be open. If you are bringing a positive and viable solution to some of the problems that we have, I welcome you to invite you to make an appointment with the office, okay? If you're bringing something positive and viable. But the last thing that I would like to see, and the last thing that we're going to see from this administration at least, is the degree of vehement vitriol that has continued over the past few months. We gotta stop it, and I gotta lead by example. So, I'm going to do just that. My focus, my main focus has always been improving the city. I'm going to continue to work to do so. My team is going to continue to work to do so. You know, I'm true, I know that to all the residents, I'm going to continue to work to do so. And you can judge us by the things that these people over here have said, because you can't, you can't beat that. No matter what you want to say about this administration, no matter what you want to say what's going on in the City of Harvey, you can't beat that. And in no other city, you can go online and look at it, you don't have the department heads getting up, getting that type of information to that type of level. You don't have it. There may be an exception to the rule, because there's always an exception to the rule, but I can tell you, you don't get it in Southland, and they're working their hind parts off and they continue to do something. And what we're going to do is, we're going to stay positive. We're going to stay positive so that our investors can see who we are. We're going to stay positive so that our people can see that as things are happening that are maybe not satisfactory, we are trying to come up with solutions. And we invite every single person, friend or foe, that if you have a viable solution and you know how to do it better, bring it to us. Right now, put together a proposal, show us how it can be done. We're going to continue to, to, to expound on this so that everyone can see. But as far as we're concerned, the days of the vehement vitriol, that's over. It is not productive for our city. It keeps investors from wanting to invest in our city. And for those of you who are here from our neighboring community that have been dealing with that type of issues for the past, I don't know, four years, two years, however long it was, you're going, you're going to have to go through that same issue as well. Because investors watched how the community was. Not just the administration, but how the community conducted itself. And I can guarantee you that that's going to have an impact on your ability to attract investors in the future. So, I don't know if some will consider that to be an olive branch or not, but it is. And I hope that you will take it in the spirit of which it is given.
Amen.
So... That being added, if, then, if, nothing else for the good of the order. Chill, it's the same thing, motion two, sir. Motion by the first? Oh, we got a motion by the, oh, motion by the third already, and the second, five, the sixth. I was thinking of six, I was saying hi. Oh, pride! And over close, here in the State of Jersey, in eighty-five-three, God bless.